Are you good to go?
Yep.
Okay, alright, okay, I'd like to. Hi, Todd, I'd like to call the meeting here of the Board of Trustees to order for our meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three with the Village of Cambridge. Roll call, please.
Ryan, Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth, Helen Beck.
Here.
Chris Phelps.
Yep.
McNally.
Here.
Okay, we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Lisa, proof of posting.
Agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, alright, looks like we're, we're good to go there. Public comment, I see two professionals from our library. Why don't you come up, introduce yourselves, please, and tell us a little bit about what's going on with the library.
Hello, everyone, I'm Samantha Dean, I'm gonna be taking over as library director here at the Cambridge Community Library. I started on June first, and, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Samantha.
Samantha. And do you go by Samantha, or do you prefer Sammy or Sam?
Not Sammy. Sam, Samantha, either one is fine.
And I'm Joan Beam, the former librarian, my last day of work is Friday after thirty-five years of serving the community.
Alright, thank you, Joan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Samantha, what brought you to Cambridge?
Um, well, my husband is from Wisconsin, and we kind of always wanted to move to Wisconsin and set up some roots, and we were lucky enough to come at the right time, so that's brought me to Wisconsin.
Okay, and Joan, what are your plans now that you're officially retired here?
Oh, boy, I really don't have any, we're not big vacationers, but I think after living in our household fifty years, I have some house cleaning to do.
I have a couple good books I can recommend.
That'd be great, Father, thank you.
Why do I get the feeling Charlie's gonna be busy for a while?
Yes, of course.
Alright, Samantha, what do you think of our library?
I love it, it's, it's wonderful, and the community has been so welcoming and, and just really wonderful. I'm so appreciative, and I'm really, really excited to, to, to work for the community and to be in the library here.
It's definitely a pride point for Cambridge, so welcome aboard.
I'm very excited, thank you so much.
Do you reside in Cambridge then?
Currently, I live in Madison.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Any plans to get this way?
Yes, we'll see how the housing market works out.
It's always the tough part right now.
Yes.
Ah, chuck and build you one.
I'll put that in my pocket, thank you.
That was good.
I knew someone was gonna say that.
And Jim, it's nice to meet you since you will be the Village Board Representative on the Library Board.
I am.
You volunteered.
You are.
Alright.
Sweet.
Any other points for Joan, Samantha? Okay, Joan, I just wanna thank you for, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it so much, and on behalf of the Board, you know, we'll look forward to seeing you around in concerts.
Oh, I'll be around.
Okay, alright, she has done a wonderful job. Samantha, we wish you the best luck here in continuing on what Joan has been doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You volunteered for this. Yeah, okay, alrighty, are there any others that would like to, to speak here in public comment?
Dean just missed us.
Alright, okay, alrighty, well, we'll close the public comment, and let's go to approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, any, any comments, corrections?
I have, I had one that I had called and talked to Joan about, so she's already, I'm sorry, Joan, to Lisa about, so I think we'll sit there.
Okay, anything else? Alright, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Alrighty, reports, a couple of things here. First off, Todd, thank you for the, the, the work that was done with the Memorial Day Parade. It, we, the, the signs were up and the roads were posted, I don't think anybody was worried that day. We had a really good turnout.
Yeah, of course, I have a lot to do with that.
Yeah, yeah, I think there were, somebody told me there were seven thousand people for the parade. And then up at the Veterans Park for the, the formal part of the, the day, there was another thousand people. And the Lions Club, they, they sponsored a little burger and brat.
Did they run out of food?
I understand they did, but they weren't charging.
No, they were, it was all free because they got so many good donations from people in the community that, and businesses in the community, which was really great.
Yeah, yeah, so they had, they had support and, and they did a great job. They're already looking at next year as far as some things they wanna do differently. One is closing, I think it's, oh, the street down there by Spring Street. Or is it Mill?
Mill.
Okay, Mill, that was one, and I think there was something else about vehicles or something, but they're, they're already, you know, hard at work on this, so they enjoyed it and they're gonna continue on. So it was a, a great turnout for Cambridge. Last, no, two weeks ago, this Friday, we had our first concert at the park, and that was another good event. It was following, Friday followed. Paula, you're more involved with that, any comments?
I, I actually did not make the, I did not make the park picnic, or the, the concert this time, but there's another concert this, this Friday.
Right, right.
What kind of music do they play there, just out of curiosity?
It depends, it depends, sometimes they, they'll do folk, they'll do, I think, like, the Trophy Husbands, I think is just regular, like, pop music, that's what the last one was.
I'm a Trophy Husband, but whatever.
That was the name of the band, was Trophy Husbands. They do a wide variety, and they try and feature something different, like, each week, so that there's something for everybody throughout the summer.
This is a weekly thing, I take it.
It's actually, they do it.
Six times, five or six times during the summer.
Yeah, it's either five or six times in the summer, yeah.
Well, that's very cool.
Yeah, and it, it, it works out kind of like every other, it kind of works out about every other Friday.
Gotcha.
There's a break in there for Fire Fest, and they had Trophy Husbands, very good cover band, and then I think the next band up this week is the O'Toole, or the Tools, O'Toole. Yeah, some Irish band, I believe, so hopefully we'll have good weather and, you know. But another event that brings in a lot of people, they have everything at the back instead of right there on Highway twelve, you know, and that's a lot more comforting because you don't have the kids out there playing in the sidewalk, and I just get nervous.
That's the park right next to the post office, right?
Yep, Veterans Park.
So, two big events, and they'll continue on, the concerts in the park.
Park a sign on the news.
Yes, it was.
You know.
It was good.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to be sheepish, I, we don't get normal television anymore, so I don't ever see this stuff, and.
You can pull it from an antenna really easily, I can show you how to hook that up on your TV if you'd like, Mark. You know, it's, it's old fashioned, I know it's old fashioned, you might not, you know, remember from when you were younger.
Add some aluminum foil.
Gary Caddell, too, I'm sure.
It's all good, I didn't say it.
I was, yeah, they did interview me and giving them a little background, and it was before the telecast at ten o'clock, and so it's, it's just nice to be able to promote Cambridge in that way. They made very well.
And throughout that night, they had it on each of the news, they did different features around the community.
They did start out here in the morning, though.
Yeah, they were here in the morning, they did some businesses, they did the pizza on the farm, they talked about Fire Fest, so they had different segments on the different broadcasts, so a lot of.
Lots of stuff happening in the little community.
Okay, alrighty, some of us get television, too. Not everybody is a paid sponsor. Okay, so that's the President's Report, gonna move on here to Plan Commission. Last evening, Lisa, you and I were there, you wanna take first stab at this and then?
So Plan Commission presented the survey results, as well as some of the draft chapters for the comprehensive plan. There were about two hundred sixty results, which they were comfortable with, we were shooting for four hundred, but felt we got a good cross-section overview. Very good discussion about the different aspects, we'll be sending out minutes and kind of letting there were, what they're gonna be tweaking in the results they presented, or the chapters they presented. At the next meeting, they'll be presenting additional chapters for us to look at, so. And then we had a quick CSM, which is on tonight's agenda, so it was, lasted about two hours, but a lot of good discussion on what they presented.
The, it's, you know, if you haven't read it, I guess we can get it out, but that's gonna go through Planning Commission first, so.
Yeah, and it was in the packet that was sent to everyone.
The only thing that I had seen is there were a couple of, they got too specific. One was talking about a four percent tax, and that's current law, but the comp plan goes for twenty years, and so in fifteen years, maybe they will change the tax law and it won't be four percent. And then the other thing is the population, you know, they said it was one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight, and I just wanted to see that that gets connected to a year, otherwise, again, the population is likely to change over the next twenty years. So it was small things.
That's the introduction, so that's what it is at this point, but they will add the twenty, twenty-three.
Okay, so, but yeah, two hours with that, and then one other item that's on our agenda here a little bit later, so. That's what we have, okay, next up is Public Works. Todd.
Evening, Todd, Public Works for Cambridge.
You don't need to.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with, with, they're, they're coming to do the river in the next couple of weeks. That's, that's the plan, I, you know, they might change a week or so, give or take. Thanks for, thanks for allowing Jay to be, Jay to be the forester, because he's doing a really good job doing it, and he, he understands a lot, he's, he's in it, and he knows what's going on. We actually watered on Friday, and, and right now, we're working, I, I passed my, another water exam, so now I'm going for zeolites and, zeolites and iron filter, and. Jeez, what else? Now I'm stumped, we were working, we've, we've been doing the line painting, line painting, we're trying to catch up with that, and we, you can tell we have, obviously, it's a little bright out there now. The lights, the lights on Main Street will be up and running as of tomorrow night, they're gonna do them tomorrow morning, so we'll have, we'll have those lights finally back, hallelujah. So, working on the water tower right now, that's, the water pump is what's running, the well is what's running the pressure in the, in the village right now.
What, what are you doing at the water tower?
They have to clean it, it's a, it's a scheduled cleaning, and then we'll have to run it and, run it and shock it and clean it out and maybe empty it again and, and shock it, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't shock clean the first time.
Is that the one by me, the water tower?
Yeah, it's empty. Yeah, I was watching him do it, flushing it out. There was one guy in there all day. Really? There's not supposed to be one guy in the water tower.
That's scary.
So Derek had to keep going over there and checking on it. Yeah, I saw Derek out there. Yeah, he kept checking, because it, one guy in there is not a good idea.
If something happened to him, how long would it take for anybody even know?
Well, Derek kept going in and checking on him, so.
So maybe it shouldn't happen to just one guy, it should be a team of two.
And I don't, I, I don't know how they do that and why, why one guy did that. Yeah, who's, who's doing it? I, I don't know the guy's name, but this was scheduled, apparently this was scheduled like a year and a half, two years ago, and something like that, and it never happened, and then all of a sudden, they changed hands or something, and the guy was going through the books, and he told them, he says, you gotta get this done now, you gotta get it done now, stop. There's no hesitation here, it's gotta go now, so.
So it's not our, our people cleaning it, it's an outside company?
Yeah, it has to be, yeah, they, they're.
That's what Derek, Derek is going now and then.
Yeah, that's, that shouldn't be.
Well, there was two guys in there doing the power washing and stuff of the inside of it, and then they, it has something to do with powder coating, to get the, to get the rust off, they have to, I can't remember the name of it, it's passing me by, and she keeps laughing.
Is it like sandblasting?
Cause I go, oh, that was the question that I didn't get in, in the thing, too, dang it. But overall, overall, we're busy.
And how are you doing on streets, even?
Pretty good, pretty good.
Sleeper's working well?
We got, still got two guys to train, me and Lee.
Oh, my gosh, that's great.
I just, I don't have time, I'm always doing something else, so it's, I wanna turn. I wanna play with it once.
Two things here, Todd, you mentioned one already, and that, I'm gonna draw a blank, cause I'm going to the other one. I'll start with the other one. The Waverly Drive, you meant, when you and I had talked about that, that's warranty work with Scott Construction.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea when that road will be redone?
They'll do it when they do it, they don't, they don't give you a schedule, they just do it. They'll give you a heads up probably the day before, and then they'll just do it.
Okay.
Sometimes they'll come, they'll give me a call in the morning and say we're on our way to do that, type thing.
The other item was the removal of the trees from Highway eighteen to Highway twelve, you know, that company, that's.
He just said they're gonna be starting in the next couple of weeks.
In the next couple of weeks.
Right.
I have, I have Frontier coming to clean the, clean their lines out, cause they have to get the trees away from their lines before they can come in, and I told them, I said, you better get here soon, cause they've been putting it off for three weeks. What's that?
You're talking about Frontier Communications?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a huge, huge communication line going right over the river, comes right where the shop is, and goes right over the river, and that has to be, they have to clean that out, that's, we can't, we can't take trees out around that, that's up to them to do, cause that's their line and their fiber optics, we do not wanna hit a fiber optic line. That would shut down a lot of things real fast.
So the, the cleaning of the Koshknon Creek, you're only taking out trees that have fallen into it, right?
They are gonna, they are gonna do some clearing.
And, okay, and how far?
That's gonna be more on the, the more, the majority of the clearing is gonna be more on, it would be the west side of the, west side of the bank there, because there's nothing there, there's nothing in there anyway, but they, they need to clear that out at least ten feet back, and the other side, they're gonna, they're gonna try to, on the, towards the shop there, behind the shop, they're gonna try to just nitpick their way through there and, and not take too much of that, because they don't wanna wipe out the bank that's right there, that's holding everything up, but they're gonna take those trees and, and push them up against the bank.
And then where are you gonna go with the trees?
The trees are staying right there, you're not gonna be able to move those trees.
So they'll be cut down and just?
These are trees that are.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Like this, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna do it orderly, he's gonna try to keep it orderly, so the things that grow up around will grow up around them, and they'll rot out.
Yeah, alright, okay, and then this is the company that, you know.
Jingle.
Yeah, and we have, they're, the Cambridge Foundation is helping on this one, and then we'll submit a bill to them once we get a bill from these guys.
Yeah, I believe the Cambridge Foundation is paying for the whole thing.
Oh, okay, alright, good.
I believe they're, and we graciously appreciate that.
Okay, alrighty.
Couple of things for you, Todd, I saw a couple of guys working right off the path behind my house toward where the cement mixers came in to pour that patio, that big two-story right there.
Yep, yep.
Was there an issue that those dump, those cement trucks made on the, on that property, was there an issue there?
They're gonna, they're cleaning that up.
The, the cement company is, not your people.
Yeah, the cement company that poured the, poured that is.
Yeah, they're gonna clean that out.
Yeah, they're gonna clean up their, their mess. We just got, I told them, I said, we just got done doing that, you are cleaning that up before you walk away from there.
Exactly.
And I even told the owner that, too.
Oh, yeah, he works for, uh, the.
Does, does he have a right-of-way permit?
I don't know, if he did, he came right across that whole thing and had the, had the cement mixers right up all on that.
Well, I just, I made sure that they're cleaning it up.
Okay.
Because we just got done, we just got done flattening that all out and making.
I saw your guys out there, I'm like, what happened? I didn't see the whole thing, I just know that the cement trucks are out there, and then after they left, I saw your guys out there.
Well, then I got a call from that guy saying, I will straighten that out, and there will be no problem.
Okay, his name is Scott, he's, he seems like a pretty good fellow.
He was very avid about making sure that he was gonna clean it up and.
Okay, and someone was, had a question about all that rock and debris, it almost looks like it's on Bill Rangette's where, property where the condos are, that he has, those duplex condos, but it almost looks like it's on that person's property where Vulcan dumped all that gravel. As you come up to it, they have their back fence on Ken Seth Way, and then you see in the taller grass, there's a whole bunch of gravel or concrete dumped right there, and I don't know if that's their property or if that's Bill Rangette's property, but they asked a question, who's gonna get rid of it, because they didn't ask for it to be there.
Okay, that's the ones that they're just.
Did you ever get a call about that, Lisa?
That's the place that they're building right now, you mean?
Yeah, but if you go down toward that black fence is for the, for the cul-de-sac of, the first cul-de-sac on the left.
Okay.
You'll see it right close to the street, it's a lot, so.
Well, when they do the landscaping, they will clean that up.
I hope.
I'll swing by there and make sure that they do.
So, like I said, I don't know who dumped it there, but the homeowner that has that black fence right there, as you come into the cul-de-sac on the left from Ken Seth Way.
Okay.
You, you pass where you go to the goat, and you go to the next street to the left, that house right on that corner has a black fence, and that pile of concrete, gravel, whatever it is, is right there next to the street, and almost looks like it could be on their property also, but it was never supposed to be there.
I'll, I'll look into it tomorrow.
Yeah, just look at it, I'm not asking you to move it.
I'll have some time tomorrow afternoon.
They asked who is supposed to get rid of it.
Why, it wouldn't be the village's responsibility to get rid of it?
I know, man, I'm, I'm trying to find out, because it was asked.
So it, yeah, it would be the builder who would need to address that, it's still under construction.
So, how is we gonna get ahold of Vulcan?
Well, I can just swing by and talk to a supervisor.
Vulcan?
No, it's, it's not Vulcan.
It was there before they started building.
Oh, the mess was there before they started building? And they're, they're putting up another unit yet, too, right?
Well, they got that one that they've started.
Then they're gonna put up another one on the other side yet.
Yeah.
I'll have to go look.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take a peek and see what's going on.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else for Todd? Alright.
But you guys are doing a great job, though, in that, in our area.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job throughout the whole village.
I only get to see a certain part of it.
And the, and the parade thing, that's, that's Lee and Derek. We, we all worked together to make sure that everything was all set up before we all left on vacation, and Lee and Derek took care of that.
Alright, okay, well, tomorrow at your staff meeting, if you could just let them know, we really do appreciate it.
Will do.
That brings a lot of focus in on Cambridge at one point in time.
Well, and the Lions Club did a li, a lion's share of it, too, they did. They, they, they went to every meeting, they came in and talked to me, they, 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 they were talking to the police, they were talking to, they were talking to everybody, so they wanted to make sure that they got it right, because that last time, wow.
They took the wrong turn.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, I remember, I was sitting on that corner last year, yeah, going, you're not supposed to be going this way.
Well, it's first, first parade for everybody, I guess, so.
Yep.
Even the police, the police didn't know what to do, you know, they didn't have any designated route.
Okay, Todd.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it, alright, we'll move on here, Village Office Updates.
I wanna say thank you to Tammy, she has jumped right in, she'll give a little more during her, the treasurer's report. Also thank both her and Judy for stepping in, going above and beyond while we're short-staffed, completing all the new employee paperwork for both Tammy, Samantha, getting everything into the state system and so forth, and we need with that. We were able to get the full federal funding for the bridge project, the county is out, put out for RFPs now, they're receiving them later this month is the end, with anticipated construction in two thousand twenty-six. So once they have the contractor and so forth, then they'll be reaching out to us to help get some input and so forth.
Ninety percent?
No, hundred to ten.
Hundred percent outstanding.
Hundred percent federal funding.
That's millions of dollars, isn't it? It's a million, like, multiple, multi-million dollar project.
Can we get sidewalk on both sides of that bridge?
It's one side, it's one side.
I know it is now, what was that?
You can't, you can't put a sidewalk on the other because you won't be able to make the sidewalk into that parking lot.
And I get that, but people walk on that side of the bridge anyway.
It's gonna be a ten to six-foot wide sidewalk, it's not gonna be this sidewalk like this, it's gonna be a sidewalk. So people will be able to.
We'll talk about it later.
That stuff we can bring up to the county, it will be a county project now, but they will be coming to us for input and so forth. April election has been closed out with the state, we're working with the auditors, they'll be doing some field work in July. The open book is next week with the Board of Review on July tenth, so all notices have gone out, published for that. I do have Board of Review training materials in the office, they just came in today. Once I complete those, others on the Board of Review can get them from me and complete the training test. While if they'd like, the state has changed the law where somebody needs to do the training every year and file with the state that it's been completed, so. We just are completing publications for rezon requests, that will be before Plan Commission and us next month. Tammy has been working with John Scott on our website, I know a while back, the board approved going out for an RFP for a new website, and we are gonna move forward with that now, you know, get it the best we can right now, but go out for the RFP for that. The well project is progressing, I've been working with MSA on the comprehensive plan. All liquor license applications have been received, background checks from myself and the police have been completed. The publications for that have been published, licensing committee will meet on the twenty-seventh before the board meeting.
Is that at five-thirty or six?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
And then the board will take final action on the licenses later that evening. Um, and then, um, the board will take final action on the licenses later that evening. Um, you know, Memorial Day Parade was talked about, like Todd said, it was a very joint effort between DPW, the office, the police. Um, the police really stepped it up. Um, Lions wants that to be a little bigger event, which it was this year, so we did get the permits to close down the highway, do the detours, the signage and so forth. Kind of laid it all out, so next year, it's easy to plug in the new dates. If they do tweak it a little, it's easy to tweak, but, um, they took the lead on, here's all the contacts you need at the county, at the state, here's the forms that have to be filled out, here's where they have to go. So, it is consistent and easy to do in the next year, so everybody worked really well together to get that done, get it done smoother, and it did go very smoothly.
Lisa, it seems to me that there was, uh, a time limit, uh, that you could block Highway twelve. And I know that the parade this year, and it's not ours, um, but it went from fifteen minutes to thirty minutes?
That's why we did the state permit.
Okay.
So that we could shut down the highway. When it's a fifteen-minute parade, the police said, "Yeah, we'll just block it, do the parade, get it done, and the street opens back up." Knowing it was going to be longer, we got the state permits, um, so that we could close the road.
Okay, I just-
They were, they were talking about doing that for homecoming, too.
For all parades moving forward, yeah.
That actually lasted forty minutes, I was told.
I, I know it lasted thirty-five, it could have lasted forty.
And it said forty minutes, I was like, wow.
Yeah, so that's why we got the state permit.
Alright, okay, but it was the Lions thing? Was that the Lions Club or-
That's why I said the police coordinated it all. We submit, the village had to submit it, um-
Okay.
So, it was a very joint, joint effort.
Alright.
And should be easy next year, the groundwork was late.
Now, now that there's no more to do, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, alright.
Um, Tammy and I did meet with, um, Computer Magic, going over annual computer reviews. Um, some things that we have to do right away, our server, um, backup, um, needs to be updated, we're doing that. Um, we'll come in with, um, next year, any computers that need to be upgraded and so forth. One thing we are moving forward with is, um, we found with Chrissy passing unexpectedly, a password manager system for office staff so that we all have access to the passwords that we need. Um, we've been running into problems trying to get into things, and Chrissy's name may be the only name on it, and trying to get that changed, and, um, so we're working with them on that. Um, we've, have to schedule, they'll come in and start training us on it. Um, working on the state workers' comp audit, um, Tammy is renewing her notary pledge. She just took the test today and passed that, so, um, get that renewed.
Open book, right?
Um, like Todd said.
Open book test? Right.
Um, Todd just passed his municipal waterworks distribution exam, so, um, lots going on, lots of ongoing projects that we're working on, some, you know, most of them, but stuff going on that we'll be ready to bring to the board when it's ready.
Okay.
What utility are you using for the password manager?
Um, Bitwarden.
Bitwarden. And who recommended that?
Computer Magic.
Okay.
A lot of their municipal contracts using.
Alright, anything else for Lisa?
And your, your last baby out of the house.
Last baby out of the house.
Congrats on that.
Yes. Yeah, graduation, we said. At graduation, "Oh, you must be sad, it's your last child." Yes and no, we've had kids in that school district for twenty-eight years continuously, so-
Wow.
We're ready to move them, we're ready to be done with that school district. You know, it's been wonderful, our kids have all done wonderful, but it's like, yes, it's time. And you too, you're first.
Yeah, I got dibs on his room. He doesn't know yet.
Okay, alright, thank you, Lisa, appreciate it. Alright, now let's turn our attention, Tammy, bills and kind of a update here on our finances.
Well, our first run of the bills was fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents. The second run was fifty-three thousand, forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, which included the, um, fourth quarter payment to the fire commission, forty-seven thousand, seven fifty-four and twenty-eight cents. We couldn't find in our records and kind of followed up through and found out that we hadn't paid that, so we got that paid. So, total bills is a hundred and seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Um, all of the bank accounts are now balanced through May, so ready to go month by month now instead of several at a time. And-
Okay, let me, let me stop you there, we'll take bills before we get it, 'cause I'm gonna get distracted with your other stuff.
Yep, that's fine.
Um, so we have bills of a hundred and seven thousand-
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Alright, discussion, questions?
Uh, she already answered me on why, why the fourth quarter payment was so late, you already told us that. Then there was one in there for, for MSA, um, it was seventeen hundred dollars for Lagoon Road, what are we doing, what are they doing at Lagoon Road?
So, that's, that's still working with the state and the plans for the intersection, so.
Okay, but we don't have any plans on when we're gonna do that, they're just preparing it for when we decide we do wanna pursue that.
Yeah, and they have submitted initial stuff to the state and so forth, so.
Go through the process.
Alright, and then, and then, um, for the SafeBilt ones, where it shows the address that it's for, um, does, is, does anything come in there for, 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 uh, I just want to, because what is, ten ninety West Main Street, what is that?
I'd have to look at it.
'Cause, I mean, 'cause I didn't know we had a-
We shouldn't have a ten ninety.
Right, so I don't know if that was supposed to be, that was supposed to be my house for three-ten West Main? And I don't know if it makes a difference, because, because if no one's gonna go back and like, double-check to see if they match, then it's not a big deal?
Ten ninety West Main? Yeah, that's probably a typo, um, we can look at that, yeah, um.
And, and again, i- if someone isn't checking, Lisa, like one to the other, then don't worry about it. I just don't know if, if they looked to that detail.
Yeah, and it should be in their invoice there, too, it would list out all the properties.
'Cause I was looking for my house, 'cause I knew we'd been inspected, so, that might have been on the last bill.
Oh. Page six.
It was on the first run of bills, uh, alphabetical order, so-
Page six.
Six. That was all I had.
That's it. Anybody else have any questions on the two runs of bills?
Seat covers for water vehicle, what's that all about?
The new truck.
Oh, oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Think I've got Todd out there on a jet ski or something.
No, but it's raining.
I'd like to see that.
And then they also put the bedded bed liner in, too, right, for the-
Yeah, they put the bed liner and rust protector in, that truck will last longer than all of us.
Okay, alright. Uh, anything else here, any other observations on the bills? Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval, uh, roll call, please.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitwer, Helen Beck?
Yes.
Krist, Phelps?
Yep.
Brineck?
Yes.
McNeely?
Yes, alright, thank you. Alright, Tammy, going back to you, what else have you been?
Okay, like I said, all of the bank accounts are balanced now through May. Um, still familiarizing myself with a lot of stuff in, in the office and, um, correcting some things that maybe weren't done or done incorrectly in the past, and we're getting those, we're working together and, and figuring those kind of things out, and just trying to follow the past to get to where we need to be in the future, does that make sense? Um, but anyway, I wanted, I wanted to ask the board what types of reports you would like me to bring to, like, the meetings, like, this, like, the second meeting of the month would probably be better so that I could have the baked statements reconciled, you know, for the first meeting. What kind of things are you looking for from me you would like to see?
What do you recommend?
Budget versus actual is always good.
I know, I know, Norma used to give us that, and, and I, we haven't had it since Norma, and I miss it.
That'd be great.
And that was when I was on the water committee.
Hmm, I mean, I think that's probably the best one that you'll be able to look at and see, you know, at least by the categories where we're at.
'Cause then we can see if we're really over in a particular category, and why are we so far over for, at this point of the year? Yeah, 'cause I always thought that was really helpful.
I mean, that would, that would be the number one, I would suggest, would be that one.
I'm probably even more basic, can we just get a summary on our cash accounts? How much we have at the various financial institutions?
Sure, I could prob, I could do like a monthly statement of what every account has.
Yep.
Yeah, I could do that.
Alright.
Maybe a little forecasting on what's coming up, what's, you know, uh, so we don't get into this predicament we got into with the fire department with the fourth quarter and everything, so a little forecasting of what's coming down the pike and what's due.
Okay, I'll have to ask Lisa to help me a little bit with that, 'cause I'm not familiar with everything yet.
And that comes in handy with the budget comparisons, because some things are all at the beginning of the year. We get state funds at certain times during the year, so, um, it kind of ties in with that.
Okay, I have to say this, Tammy, it's refreshing to be asked that question. Um, you know, what we would like to see, so, it's been, uh, it's been a while, so thank you very much, okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, uh, let's go on to new business, uh, item eight. Uh, Lisa, you wanna talk about the CSM with Wendy and Claire?
This was a recommendation from the Plan Commission, it is a simple lot line adjustment of, um, an existing home out in Scott Farms next to the new homes, um, or the lots. Somebody's garden was planted and landscaping, so they're just adjusting the property line to accommodate what's there, so.
And this passed last night?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, anybody care to make a motion on this?
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the certified, uh, survey map for Wendy, for the, um, sorry, uh, wheat, for, for six thirteen Wheatland Drive.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Item B, business, Northwestern Mutual Retirement Account for Joan Beam.
So, before we entered the Wisconsin retirement system, employees' retirement was through Northwestern. Um, Jones is the only account left there, um, everybody else over the years has transferred it out. With her retiring, they need action from this village board, because it's actually listed that the village is the owner of that retirement account, so we just need action saying that, you know, yep, we're transferring ownership of the retirement account to Joan Beam, so that she can then transfer it into a different, um, vehicle.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of the Northwestern Mutual Retirement Account for Joan Beam to Joan Beam.
I'll second.
Alright, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, item C, we wanna add Tammy Jordan, our village treasurer, to the bank accounts at Badger Bank and Bank First.
And we need this as a village motion for them to be able to put her name on the accounts and give her access to-
I will make a motion to add Tammy Jordan, the village treasurer, to the bank accounts at both Badger Bank and Bank First.
I'll second.
Okay, um, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously, alright. And then, um, we've got, uh, a park reservation, item D.
Alright, I make a motion to approve the park reservation for Wyatt Rose on June twenty-fifth for West Side Park.
Second.
Okay.
I do, I did have one question here, uh, we're, we're sure it's West Side Park, because he did not check the box for the-
That's it, it was West Side Park, I did talk to him.
Does, does he want the shed, the pavilion as well, or just the park?
He does, um, yeah, um.
Because he didn't mark either one of those, so I, we just probably need to clarify for him, and then someone would need to unlock the-
Yeah, to unlock the, and, you know, they want electrical, so I'm assuming they're cooking and, and so forth down there, so. Um, I'll get verification.
They're having a half of a birthday party.
There is electricity outside.
Yeah, so.
I think a six-year-old.
Forty-year-old?
I'll get you a copy and you can reach out to him.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously, good luck, Wyatt. Um, okay, uh, the next item up, and this is what led to the revised agenda. It's the village terrace trees and, uh, some communications from Jay Weiss. Um, I think you have it, but I'm going to read this to you, uh, it won't take that long. Uh, Cambridge Village Board, "Over the past two decades, our village has built the most diverse and one of the fastest-growing community forests in Wisconsin. It's a success that's widely known and respected in forestry circles across the strait, state. Our progress has also served as an inspirational model for numerous other communities. Unfortunately, many of our recently planted trees are under threat, the threat has two causes, the first is persistent drought. We've had no meaningful precipitation for six weeks now, this letter was sent on June twelfth. The second threat is inaction, my two calls to the village to schedule tree watering early last week have yet to receive a response. If not addressed this week, I estimate that as many as one hundred recently planted trees throughout our village will decline and eventually die. Removing and replacing as many as one hundred dead trees would be significantly more expensive and time-consuming than scheduling necessary semi-weekly waterings. Routine waterings were leveraged by our village to greatly reduce tree fatalities during the two thousand and twelve drought. Most important to any plan is that the village work with the Cambridge Tree Property to identify vulnerable trees and establish best practices to assure waterings are effective. If Public Works is too busy, I'd be happy to help or even complete the watering myself. If the village is concerned about volunteer liability exposure, please note that the tree project has a two-million-dollar general aggregate liability insurance policy that specifically covers activities relating to its charter, the stewardship of our village forestry assets. Our beautiful hanging flower baskets downtown are watered numerous times weekly, and I'd like to think most residents would see no reason to exclude recently planted trees from routine waterings during droughts. I'd like to ask the village board's help in addressing this, and would emphasize that any proposed solution be implemented immediately. Thank you for your consideration, Jay Weiss, Cambridge Tree Project." He and I had talked last week, and, uh, we talked even as, uh, most recently as yesterday. He's concerned, now today, we're getting some precipitation. Um, I know that I have talked with other individuals more on the, uh, growing crops, and the rain that we've had is helping, but it's, it's been on a level of one to ten, it's been at a two. So, I don't know about you, but I'm seeing trees, even in my own area, that are losing their leaves. So, we've got these trees that are in the terraces, and, uh, Jay is prepared to either kind of coach, uh, go along with it, or do this on his own, so.
We, we don't need Jay to do that, we have a village arborist.
Okay.
And I think that we have our village arborists take care of the items, our trees that- And I think that we have our village arborists take care of the items, our trees that need to be taken care of.
Forester.
Our forester, yes, village forester, I think Jay is more than.
He read too.
What?
Jay's response.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a couple of problems I have with Jay Weiss's letter, and I don't know if, if our staff wants to address any of the things, because I'm not sure that, that Jay's letter accurately reflects what the village has been doing. Also, Mark, I would ask, when Jay reaches out to you, tell him to call the village, don't call on his behalf, because then you become the middleman, and then that just makes things more difficult. So if Jay Weiss wants something done in the village, he should call our village staff, not you personally.
Yeah, he, he never reached out to me or Todd or Jay, so to say his, you know.
His two calls went unanswered?
Were not answered, I told you, I was telling the guys, you talked to the guys, you called me again, and I told you I talked to the guys. He never called me or Todd or Jay, so no, we never responded to him.
Okay.
And if he would have, I'd do the same thing I do to any constituent that calls with a concern, say I will address it to the appropriate staff person, and they will evaluate, do what they need to do. I don't call them all back and say, okay, I called Todd and told him there's a pothole, okay, Todd went and looked at it, Todd's going to fill it with, you know. We get ten, fifteen, twenty calls a day, we don't follow up step by step on every, but he never did reach out to any of us, it was all communication through you.
Okay.
And I did draw and water on Friday, so you know.
All right, did he call you, or did you call him last week?
He's never called.
All right.
The only time, the only time he texted me and said he needed some buckets from, from the, from the back thing where he has some stuff in storage back there.
All right.
We shouldn't be there anyway, because he's a resigned employee or volunteer, he, it's, it would be like me resigning and then going in and asking you guys if I can go tell those guys what to do.
But didn't you call?
It doesn't work that way.
Yeah, I, I understand, did you call him though?
I, I called him once, I think, we, we talked about trees on Terrace Street.
All right, okay.
How long ago was that?
Two weeks ago, something like that, because some guy was worried about his trees not, not making any money, his money back and stuff, and I was like, what? You know, and so I went back and he told me how to look at the tree and, and take care of it.
Yeah.
And he did reach out to me.
Jay went over there, Jay went over there and showed me what to do, and not Jay Weiss, Jay.
RJ.
RJ. Went over there and showed me what to do and scratched it off and it was green in there, that means the tree's still growing.
And Jay Weiss did contact me last week on something totally unrelated to questions I provided the answers to, but never on the watering.
Okay, where are we at, I mean, you mentioned watering was done last Friday?
Yeah, they did the parks, they did the parks, all the parks and the Amundson Center. People generally that, that own their properties are taking care of the terrace ones.
In.
That's the way it's been, since I've been here.
In the, you know, one, Jay Ames did provide a response that I provided to you, I also provided a memo, when the trees are planted in the terraces, when those letters are sent out, it specifically tells them, you know, and this is the year they're planted, but residents are asked to commit, commit to weekly watering until fall, you know, we let them know right off the bat, when trees are planted in their terrace, it is their responsibility to water them, the village is not coming around watering the trees.
To comment on what you just said is that when we had the trees planted by Mr. Weiss, it was known then that it was our responsibility to take care of those trees that were planted. So, yeah, we, I know I take care of the trees on the terrace area, there's like eight of them.
I had just bought seven from the oven water room, but, but the homeowners.
Okay.
So maybe a note in the, in the, sorry.
No, no, I just, I think you got a good explanation of both the operational side of what the expectation is, is, and the administrative side, right? I mean, you just gave a synopsis of what, what needs to happen, as a constituent, you call the administrator, and she divvies out the responsibilities to the subject matter experts. There's, and the operational side is Public Works makes it happen. So, I mean, I, I think there's much to do about nothing.
I, I, there's, I don't think there's anything to legislate here, which is what our responsibility is.
Okay. And I'm not saying there is, I'm just, I appreciate what Jay has done with the thousand trees.
We all do, we all do.
Oh, we definitely do, there's a lot.
Yes, so. Okay, well, if you've got your, you know, Jay, your Jay is already on the, on the task, and maybe.
He is.
He's not doing the terrace.
He's not doing the terraces, he is doing the trees on village property, or the.
The properties, the properties for the village.
Not the terraces.
That's why the trees are taking care of it.
Okay.
So question, sorry, is there a way to put a note on the water bill to say, hey, please, you know, to remind constituents to water the trees on their terrace? Is that extra money if it is, and I, I understand, I'm sorry.
Possibly, you know.
Just a thought.
Yeah, and on the website, and, you know.
Maybe on the website, as opposed to the water bill, because people then will have another reason to complain, if it's on the water bill. Oh, I got an expectation to have to pay more.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, and it, it honestly, I'll have to tell you, I know it's been really dry, but, I mean, my husband and I, we have over twenty trees on our small property.
I thought it was a forest.
And, yeah, and it didn't even occur to us until like last Saturday, that, you know what, maybe we should be watching these trees to see if we need to start watering them. So, and if they're native trees, you know, the whole idea about using native stuff is the roots go deep and they try to find the water that's out there.
Are yours mature trees though?
We are in six, we'd, weeks of drought, but.
Yours are mature trees?
Not, we've got, we've got a couple of them on the terrace that are, that were planted, I would say within the last probably four or five years. So a couple of them, they, they look okay, there's, the leaves are still green right now.
Well, that's because there's a really good water table right there.
Yeah, so.
Really good water table, this whole village is a water table.
So, so far, they've been pretty good, but Dean and I, Dean and I just recognized last weekend, we probably need to keep an eye on them and maybe, maybe throw some water on some of those trees, so.
I think that's what Jay's concern was, Jay Weiss, was the stuff that had just been planted up to three years ago, you know, those, those trees just didn't have a deep enough root system, and they needed some help right now. And so, you know, he, he's seen this, I mean, he was responsible for many of these being put in, and he just doesn't want to see anything happen to them, and I appreciate that, so.
And if you guys, my fellow board members, if you did not read Jay Ames's response, which Lisa sent out at one forty-nine today, if you didn't read Jay Ames's response, please take some time to read that, I think it's a very good response.
That's good.
Very.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I feel, I feel very com.
I told him to move that on to Lisa.
And I feel, I feel very confident in our current village forester, I think Jay Ames will do a great job at it.
Well, he did it for the, he was working with the city of Fort Atkinson and the county, and tree planting is a big thing for, for both of us, so.
Yep.
Okay, all right, I don't think there's anything else to do here, so we'll move on. Item nine, unfinished business, nothing to do there, we have correspondence, questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items? Anybody have anything besides OBK Park?
Where are we with the welcome signs?
I know Jane had, oh. Jane had reached out to both, Frank did respond, I think he's looking more at the original location than by the, so she has been working with them.
From, from my opinion, if, as long as it's somewhere on that side of the road, we can see it, that's fine by me, whatever, whatever works, kind of, I, I would think, the, I, I would say that I would think the Economic Development Committee would be fine with supporting that and presenting that to the board, so.
Yeah.
Yep. And then equalized value calculation, did I talk about that last time?
Yeah, that's something on Tammy's plate, I don't, we haven't.
Okay.
We've talked about it a little bit, but.
And I know, I mean, she, you're doing a great job, I, I will probably just continue to mention it, because I don't want it to fall off, like, I feel like it did the last time. Those were the only two things I had.
Both for water and sewer, the CMR and the Consumer Confidence Report will be coming, those are both due end of this month, so one next meeting will require a resolution from the board. CCR has been sent to the newspaper for publication, so that will be for water and sewer and village board, just FYI, get those done.
I did just think of one other thing, did we, did we complete our audit?
No, we're working with them still, they're gonna be doing some field work in July.
And I apologize if I made you repeat that, if you already said that today.
Yeah, they did, the Form C was filed, and the PSC report has been filed, and now move on to the audit.
Do we know when the next joint fire and EMS, all the municipalities, when that meeting's gonna take place?
I know that I have, Mark Cook is, has been in the hospital, he had some surgery, and I'm supposed to connect with him at the end of the week, and I, I just don't know. You know, what is the plan here, or what information they're gathering, so.
I don't know if you were supposed to be forwarding questions to Jane or anything like that.
Jane did go back to them with comments that we had had, what we, you know, so she has been in contact with her attorney and.
Okay.
So we'll see what the next steps are.
Okay, anything else? All right, upcoming meetings, June fourteenth is the Library Board, nineteenth, open book here, June twentieth, water and sewer, June twenty-seventh, licensing, as well as a village board meeting. July sixth, border review, the tenth, Plan Commission, joint, July eleventh, joint law enforcement, and then July eleventh, Village Board, so those are upcoming meetings.
I don't need to be at open book.
No.
I need, I need to be at the Board of.
Board of Review.
Got it.
Yeah, okay.
And Board of Review, is that at noon?
Noon, noon until two.
Lisa, I'll be, I'll be out of town, June sixteenth through the thirtieth for Marine Corps training, I'll miss that board meeting at twenty-seventh.
Okay, that takes care of meetings, item thirteen.
Make a motion to adjourn.